I call the meeting to order of Aransas Pass on June 19th at 6:00 PM. This rise for the invocation.
Dear Father, we thank you for this day that you've given us. We thank you, my Father, for the country that we live in, the liberty that we enjoy. We thank you for our law enforcement, my Father, to keep us safe. My Father, I pray for the condition, the atmosphere of our country, all these tragedies that have struck in the last week, even last night. Pray your mercy and your comfort to these individuals that have suffered loss. The speedy recover of the congressman, my Father, be with his family. We ask that you give us the guidance, my Father, to make the decisions that are right for the city of Aransas Pass. This we ask in Jesus' name.
Amen.
Let's leave this to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Go to the consent agenda. All of the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless the council members so request. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the council, constant, constant agenda and will be considered separately.
I make a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
I second.
In favor?
Aye.
Allen?
Thank you, Mayor. I declare a public hearing open for the purposes of taking up the request of Raoul Montemeyer for a conditional, conditional use permit to operate a bar at 157 South Commercial Street. I'm sure the council is already aware, but the Planning and Zoning Commission met on this matter and approved it subject to six conditions. Is Mr. Montemeyer here?
May I? May I? I was really good.
Sure.
Something.
After the packets were sent out, I did receive one response back on the public notice that we mail out to all the abutting landowners. And it was from Mr. Jeffrey Jenkins, who owns Delta AP, the company that owns the former Bank of America. And he asked that the council consider adding a provision that the, would protect that lot from being used as parking. So just a provision to ensure that the manager provided adequate parking and stopped his customers from parking on the Bank of America parking lot. He was just concerned that, he said that he owns property in other places and it's been an issue in the past where if someone is using their private parking, that they've had to deal with liability issues of, you know, car bender benders and property damage. So he just asked for that provision to be considered as well.
Okay. Well, anyways, Mr. Montemeyer here. Yes, sir, you want to come forward, please? Mr. Montemeyer, you were at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting?
Yes, sir.
And are you aware of the conditions that they set for you?
Yes.
Are you agreeable to those things?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And you just heard the lady speak about the parking. Is that, is that a problem?
No, I mean, I will adjust that. I mean, we have plenty of parking still, but I will keep it up on, off of that.
And you can kind of monitor the parking over at the bank?
Yes.
Okay. Members of the council, have any comments or questions?
My only concern is, you know, having been there and in the previous owner that occupied it, I know when we got into work on Monday, there were a lot of, there were always like beer bottles.
Oh, yeah.
The glass beer bottles that were in the parking space. And so that's, I don't know how you're able to control that, but I can see the concern of the owner of the, of the property.
Yeah, sure.
Well, that's, that's one of the conditions that he maintains it in.
Every weekend, it was really bad.
Okay.
Were you the, the previous owner?
No.
No? Okay. But the owner of the building is still the same one? Oh, okay.
Well, you, you don't have any problem with any of these conditions?
No, sir.
And you can monitor the, the parking across the street?
Yeah.
And you can be sure that, that those premises are clean?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's better that way. I mean, keep it clean.
That's right.
Everybody.
Alan, I have some concerns.
Sure.
With that property. Because with the TABC records, it showed that in the eight, eight-month period, you had, there was a lot of problems on that property. And finally, the, the TABC revoked the license on that property. I mean, I have the TABC report right here.
Yeah, I'm, I'm new there, so.
What kind of, what kind of experience do you have in the bar business?
No, I'm just trying to open a business, I mean.
Okay. What do we see as a council for the vision for our community? I mean, I certainly don't want to stop anybody from opening a business here, but is a bar the best thing for us to be open? Chief, how do you feel? What, what are some of your concerns?
Well, Jan and council, mayor, we've actually had a lot of problems at that location. The bar before T-Town, that's what you're referring to, T-Town had a revocation as a result of our steady enforcement. There were a lot of problems that we were having at that location on bar inspections. And it seems like a constant trend in some of our bars that are kind of in rundown businesses, rundown buildings. It seems like if the bar owner doesn't take a personal investment to spruce up that location, we tend to have a lot more problems with those locations. For example, Crowsnest, we're looking at a revocation on Crowsnest. We had a revocation that we got on T-Town. The bar before T-Town, we had problems with. In fact, I was there on one of them, they had a disturbance and a fight that involved the bar management staff. Some of these, this riffraff that's being pushed out because of the enforcement effort, not because of the owners, now is trying to move in the other bars. And these people are picking bars that are of rundown in nature, of ill repute, where the management does not call law enforcement, does not impose or enforce the restrictions or requirements. And then they become a problem for us. I mean, if you remember a few years back, at Crowsnest, we had a guy beaten within inches of his life, and then the suspects fled to Louisiana. We had to chase them all the way over there to get them. And the bar was little to no help in that situation. And it seems like it's a revolving door. As soon as we close down one shoddy bar that's bringing harm and, and bad problems to our community, we allow another bar to move right in and open up. Now, I'm not criticizing Mr. Montemeyer. I don't know his history and I don't know what his, his plans are. But I, I personally feel that if there is no personal investment into that establishment to spruce it up, clean it up, and, and hold it to a higher level, we're going to have the same problem that we've had the last several management people that have taken over this, this location.
What is your background, sir?
I'm clean. I don't have pretty much any travels, I mean.
No, 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 no. What do you do for a living? How do you?
Oh, oh, I'm a pipe feeder welder. I mean, I'm working most of all.
So you have experience in the bar business?
No, I mean, I don't think nobody has experience of putting up business first, I mean.
Mr. Montemeyer, may I ask a question?
Sure, go ahead.
Is this, are you opening this bar for yourself or is somebody else?
No, no, I mean, for, for myself. I, I work a lot, so I try to make a business, stay more close to, to my family.
Okay.
Pretty much, instead of going out of town, I try to make an extra income to my, to my house.
So you have somebody locally that will be managing that business or?
I'm, I'm working here now.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I'm trying, I'm gonna, I'm trying to stay here for, I can do that, for I can put in attention the needs to, to do that. Trying to be a sport bar more, more than just a bar. I mean, for, for our people, trying to see a games, I mean, I put in a 6TVs and for, for people who like sports and stuff like that, go relax, see a game. It's, it's my vision like that. I mean, I'm not trying to, to get into bad, bad situation. I'm trying to, I want, I want to start right and, and keep it like that, I mean.
I understand. And, and, you know, council, just so you understand too, other, other communities, other towns, and we've explored this, this idea, have, have had ordinances in place that where, when a bar closes, if the bar is closed for so long, the bar, that location can never reopen as a bar. One, two, if the bar gets shut down because of violations and stuff like that, the area just seems to be conducive to criminal activity or, or people of ill repute type characters, then that location as well can be forbidden from opening as a bar again. Just things for future consideration on locations and establishments, but that would have to be enacted as an ordinance. I don't have any reservations. I mean, our enforcement stays the same. When we encounter a problem, we focus on that problem to either correct it. We work really hard with the owners to try to keep them up and in compliance with TABC. When we determine that they're not going to work towards compliance or they're going to work against the law, then we start making administrative cases. I have a liquor officer that focuses, focuses on those establishments, and then we work directly with TABC, like was the case with the Crowsnest, with T-Town and stuff like that, to have their licenses pulled.
Will you be serving any food?
Not in a moment. It's just a.
So it'll be strictly a bar?
I mean, sport bar more than, I mean.
Yeah, a sports bar has food, so that they're not consuming four hours of liquor with no food.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So.
Any other questions of the, of the council? Does anyone in the audience have any questions or comments? And again, Mr. Montemeyer, you don't have any problem with any of these conditions and you'll abide by all of these things?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, with that in mind, I declare the public hearing closed.
What would be the favor of the council?
I know that just this has been reflecting on the previous, you know, what the reputation of the, of that location is, the previous owner and what it's been carrying on. I know that it looks like our planning and zoning has approved for the business to be It says, it says no problems during the first 12-month period. Can we amend that as a council and make it to six months?
Sure.
Okay. I, I, I would say that I, I make the motion to approve the opening of the bar with the, making the, a change to, from 12 months to six months, because we really have to keep an eye on that right there. That is one of the main streets that we have, and making sure that you maintain the, the location, don't let it get rundown, and cooperate with our police department. If you have any one in there that's causing any problems, we need to make sure that it's taken care of speedily. And the location, I don't know how you're going to be able to keep up with the, the bank, you know, the parking lot at that, that building across the street, because it was, I can just tell you from working, having worked there, the condition that we would find it.
I will, well, I can think is, keep it clean after we close, I mean, make sure there's anything, not let it park there and keep it up every time, every day before we leave.
Well, I make that motion and change it.
I just, I just have one request. Make sure you don't over-serve. If someone is intoxicated and you know it, get them a ride, cut them off. Just don't over-serve.
And Vicki, I assume that your motion includes regulating the parking in addition to all these other?
Yes.
Conditions? Right, and, and striking it from 12 to six months.
Right.
And if anything happens, make sure you cooperate with the police department to, so we can clear whatever happened out there.
That, that is a requirement of their license status, they have to cooperate. And as far as Carrie, just to cover, we have made cases on local establishments that have over- served. We trace that back on at least one occasion that comes to mind where we had an administrative action taken because of that.
Okay. So that's my motion.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'll say aye, as long as it's a six month, and see how that goes. Okay. Make sure that all of you, whoever you are, get their TABC certification also.
Well, I haven't, I hold that already.
Yeah, but anybody that's serving, because that'll give them the rules of serving and everything too, that's important.
Yeah, everybody that is going to work in there will be having the class and the certification.
Okay, good.
Motion, Carrie.
All right, good evening, council and mayor. First item we have here is consider an act on awarding for the bid for administrative services for the grant we went out for. We only had one proposal come in from Rat Works. Staff recommends approving it. The cost will be $41,000 and this comes straight out of the grant money, so it's at no cost out of the city budget.
Well, I make a motion that we award the bid to Rat Works, so $41,000 is going to come out of the, the grant money.
Correct.
I'll second. I have one question before we, before we all say aye. How do other cities handle their insurance within the, the city employees? Do they have, do the city employees around us, do they contribute to their health insurance in any way?
Most cities do. I would have to look further into it to see how they're doing it, but for the most part, they do some kind of contribution to it.
But we're 100% right?
For the employee, I'd say yes.
Right, okay. What?
We're talking about, we're talking about the grant. We're not to the insurance yet.
I was like, what did that have to do with? I was gonna say. I could have swore I heard you say health insurance.
Me too.
Did you think we were on health insurance?
No.
No? Okay.
I was getting ready, I was getting ready to say something.
Okay, never mind.
I was getting confused.
I was too.
Well, I was already confused, obviously.
It's contagious.
Okay, yes, Rat Works. Aye.
Second.
I think he seconded.
I think Jan seconded.
Okay, good.
All in favor?
Aye. I was ahead of the game, sorry.
All right, the next item we have here is to act on awarding the RFP for Highland Storm. We went out for bids, we only received one bid. Unfortunately, the bid came out almost double what our budget is. At this point, we have various options. We can either accept it, we can rebid and see if we can get more people to participate or just wait altogether. Now, this is a 64-inch pipe, as I mentioned to you during the workshop. There are some areas that are in very bad shape, so this is something we definitely need to look at, at getting it replaced. And at this point, like I said, we can either accept it or we can rebid, whatever the wishes of the councils are.
Is there a way that you can find money for this?
Yes, I know there, there are some savings already on the capital project. There was a one that was listed twice, so there's some savings there that can come into it. We'll still be short about $100,000, and I'm still looking at other areas where we can get that money from. And there is money, it's just we've got to move it around. But like I said, we could re-advertise and see if we can get additional bidders.
Oh, yeah, I, I would like to, to make a motion to table this and have it rebid.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion?
How long will the rebid process take?
We'll put it in the paper this week, so it'll be a two-week period, and then we bring it back.
What has been our, the history when we go out for bids? Have we had a lot of interest in people coming in?
In this one, we did have another company out of Austin that was interested. They're asking a lot of questions, but they never submitted their bid. And J.J. Fox was the only one that attended the pre-bid meeting and actually walked the project with us. No one else. We did send it out to some other companies, but.
But in the history of, from other, because I know we've gone out for bids, has anyone else come in?
We've had some on water lines and sewer lines, where other companies have been awarded the project as well. It's just maybe reaching out to them one-on-one and see, make sure that they're getting it off our website or reading it in the paper.
And, and I personally think that if, if you reach out to some of the more prominent utility contractors in the area and let them know that this is up for bid and we, we're seeking.
Well, I sometimes feel like two weeks is not enough.
I just think, how long have we been waiting on this, to do this for Highland? I know Highland has been for over a year, right?
Yeah. Yeah, because there's some sections that we keep filling in just to maintain it, because it keeps collapsing every time we get a, a rain event.
I just feel like we've kind of waited so long for this, even though I know the price is high.
Yeah, the, the bid is highly inflated.
A lot.
You know that for a fact?
Yes.
Yeah, just check it out.
Yes, I, I.
Well, I did do the research.
Twenty-two more weeks.
It is highly inflated.
I, I just, I just think like, we need to move forward, but okay, I can, I can, I can hold on for two weeks. Okay. And that's it.
Okay, you got it. So all in favor?
Aye.
Does somebody second to table it?
Yeah.
I didn't hear you, I'm sorry.
The next item we have is under finance. We, as we're getting our budget ready for this next fiscal year, we're looking at our insurance as well. Currently, right now, with TML, we are looking at a 20% increase in our insurance. Currently, right now, with TML, we are looking at a 20% increase in our insurance because of health history with our staff. For this reason, we want to go ahead and ask permission to go off our RFP to see if there's other providers out there that can provide better insurance to our staff before we decide what route we're going to take.
Who's our character, health, health insurance?
TML.
TML, okay.
Favor of the council? Okay, when I make a motion, we allow the staff to go out for RFPs for health insurance.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It's your turn.
Actually, Chuck, are you here? I'll let you take this item. Counsel, this is Consider an Act on a Request from the Memorial Commission to Add Jimmy Lee Clayhorn to the Memorial Commission plaque. And Chuck West will speak to that.
Mayor, Council. Mrs. Arnold, the mother of Jimmy Lee Clayhorn, has submitted an application and a death certificate with supporting information requesting her son's name be added to the plaque out at the Siemens Memorial Tower. The Memorial Commission, under Chair Lady Lou Arsmot, met last Tuesday evening, discussed it, visited with Mrs. Arnold, and voted unanimously to approve and forward to council for final approval.
I was at that meeting and we did agree with that. And the note showed that it was going to be $150 to engrave the name and that was fine. And then in New York notes, it said, "We, we always give the commission $10." So would that not make the amount $160 donation?
Ms. More, the, historically, the fee for quite some time has been $100 to add a name to the plaque. That's a no-profit venture for Mr. Harrison at that expense. He's very busy and has declined an opportunity to engrave it. My understanding is Mr. Emmanuel Bontello has contacted an engraver who would do it for $150. Historically, of the fee that was charged, $10 went to the Memorial Commission's bank account. Historically, the commission's money to do things with has been raised by solicitation from commission members and by the occasional collection of $10. That's not particularly satisfactory to me and something we can look at in the future, a way to fund this without having commission members knocking on doors and calling on friends. But it's, the current, under the current practice, the fee was quoted to me at $150 and $10 of that would go into the commission's bank account.
So the engraver, he's going to end up with $140 and the commission gets-
Yes, sir.
Okay, so-
Yes, sir. I, I do not know this engraver. But Mr. Bontello, because of his past career, has contacts that we don't have, so.
Favor of the council?
When I make a motion, we approve the request of-
Yes?
Lou, 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 come up here so we can get this on tape.
My name is Lou Arsmot, chairperson at the Memorial Commission, and I personally spoke to the man. It's $150 for him, period. There's no $10 comes out of that.
So it's going to be $160 that they would have to pay?
If we get $10, it has to be $160.
For the commission to get $10.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. There we go.
Mayor, council, as you're making a decision on this folk, and since it has come up, the fee on it, as I understand the history of this tower, and Ms. Arsmot's been key in filling me in on the history, I would highly suggest that the council consider eliminating a fee to the bereaved for the addition of a name to the plaque. It's inconsequential to some of us, it's a lot of money to some of us. The city accepted responsibility for the tower. And for the small number of, opportunity is the right word, wrong word, for the small number of times that we have to add a name to a plaque, I don't think the city would be hurt by making that payment to have it done and not put that payment on the bereaved. In addition to Mr. Chaney's $10 on this, knowing the family that's requested this, I'm planning to split the cost of that out of my pocket to get that name on it. And this is not the way the city should be doing business, in my opinion. Thank you for the opportunity.
I'll take the other half.
Okay, thank you. And I agree with you, Chuck. I agree.
We were paying for it.
That's something for Fernando to look into, we don't have the action item here on the panel.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ron.
Thank you.
Name on there.
I agree.
Thanks, Chuck.
Yeah, I absolutely agree.
And you'll get with the family and let them know that the entire amount has been picked up.
Okay, so.
I don't think you voted on that. I got cut off in the middle of the motion. Okay, I make a motion that we approve adding Jimmy Lee Clayhorn's name to the Memorial Tower.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, council, mayor. The next item, 12-2, is Consider an Act on a Request from the Memorial Commission to Remove the Flagpole from Siemens Memorial Tower. Chuck will speak to this item as well.
Mayor, council, on the southwest corner of the lot where the Siemens Memorial Tower is, is a steel pipe flagpole. It has not been used much at all during its life. People have a hard time remembering the last time there was a flag up there. And there's currently no line or cable or rope or anything to hoist a flag with. When we added the, replaced the crucifix with the newly rebuilt one, we had the city's man lift out there. And I had them hoist me up so I could look at that flagpole and found the top of it where the, a rope would go through, not a pulley, but simply a metal ring, and it had rusted through. And that's why it was unusable. In the process of doing that, I discovered two, almost three places where there's a 10-inch piece of that steel pipe completely rusted through. You can stick your hand in there and feel the backside of the pipe. There are numerous other bad spots in the pipe. I had the carpenter that I worked with in doing the cross of the crucifix, looked at that and gave us a $500 estimate for going up and welding new steel in place and then repainting the flagpole. Given its lack of use over the years, I see no reason to spend $500 of city money to, to repair it. And the commission decided if we can't repair it, it's best that we take it down.
Fernando, can Public Works take that down?
Yes, we can get staff out there to remove it.
At a no-cost basis, the city? Thank you. Muscle and sweat, got it. Well, then I make a motion that we allow the Memorial Commission to remove the flagpole, actually, Public Works to remove the flagpole from the Siemens Memorial Tower.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, mayor, council. The next item, 12-3, is Fire Department stats for February. Chief Cox.
Mayor, council, thank you for your time. You have stats here actually, not for just February, it's very March. It's actually going to be three months, so we have through May the 31st. And at the end of that, the year-to-date, that was, we've had 257 calls and that gives us, the date range, 152 in that. We've kind of had this up and down, really high months, really low months, and kind of balancing out, we're still, we're heading, we're heading pretty high. And the reason I give these numbers, it's kind of important to look at what we're doing in a big picture, not what we did last month, not what we did last year, but looking at the bigger picture. Understanding 2015, as I came in, we ended up with about 350 calls. My first complete year here, we did 582 calls, so a significant number. And when I was doing my projections, I was only four calls off. These computer models are pretty accurate. Well, we're projecting 762 is where we're at for this year, heading up. So from a mere 350, we're, we're easily going to be doubling that in the very near future. Guys are able to handle it, I'm adequately staffed for that. I mean, I could always use more stuff, but, but we're able to handle. Most of those are going to be EMS-driven. Right now, we're running about 64% of the emergencies responding to are going to be EMS-driven or medical call-driven. We're hot and heavy on our business inspections. We now have catalogued 358 businesses, that's an increase of 31. That's just us capturing all those businesses that are out there. And it's those little bitty ones that just pop up or used to pop up and we didn't know about it, just kind of somebody, you know, chief spoke of, you just kind of, no business go out and a new one comes in. And sometimes the city didn't know about these, you know, the way they pop up. We have new systems in order that we're working on in Public Works, the building official and the fire department to kind of, we have a process that I can be captured now. Our numbers are up on the inspections, we were able to do 73 inspections during that time period. And inspection, it involves so much more than just, you know, when I look at that number, it's not just going out doing the inspection. It's making the call, they tend to reschedule, we try to, you know, fit it to what's best for the business owner. We don't want it to ever be a burden or inconvenience to them. You know, they go in and do an inspection, usually a re-inspection, taking them, you know, any kind of forms. Sometimes they even ask for a courtesy pre-inspection. Go out there, what's the most common stuff we're going to see? And we'll take, you know, restaurant, bar, whatever it may be, and say, here's the common things we'll find before we even go out and do that inspection. We were, currently, we just finished up, we finished all the, we had a lot of red tags out of the school district. We were working with them and their maintenance, we got all that cleared up. They had a bunch of them that had been sitting stagnant for a long time that we didn't even know about. I got all their sprinkler systems, their binne hoods, all that stuff that they have in the kitchen that protect the citizens, not only the kids, the staff, but also the firefighters. We got that up to date. Training, we're at about 292 for this time period and a plus or minus 100, that's probably, that's a very conservative number. We've onboarded three new employees, so there's lots of just every day over there. It's, you know, if I really wanted to categorize it, it's, it's big numbers. But I put it here as, you know, a plus or minus at least 100. Chief Rego and I have just completed a blue card command training system, which is a nationally renowned command training. It takes the NIMs classes that some of the, a lot of the staff has to take. And it goes and specializes in what, those calls that we make all the time. Those, you know, the house fires, the apartment fires, the strip center fires. And we really drill down on those and we get really good and competent at that. And they, you go to these test centers and they set you up in, in these little cubicles and you're with other students and you're just running drill after drill and it's all live. It's, you're looking at screens, it's got real fires, whether you're going inside or you're sitting outside in the command, and you do that for three days. Well, first up is 50 hours to get to take that class. Then once you go to that, there's three days of just running SIMs over and over and over. This is done, you know, through Alan Brunascini, which is kind of the godfather of NIMs and ICS. So we're real excited to have that, not just, you know, it's still something, I'm not going to say it's new, but not a lot of people have it because of the commitment it takes to the program. We just finished up our May Day and annual, annual May Day and RIT team training, which was a good, a great success. And we're, we're so, so passionate about this new training that we've made an annual deal that we're getting very, very proficient at that. And we're going to take it out to Rockport, Ingleside, Gregory, whoever it is, even Portland, and we're going to start teaching it to them. So not only are we going to get better at teaching it, but the people that are going to come and rescue the rescuers, that's who I have to look at. So we're really competent on their level, but we have to understand that Ingleside and Rockport, that's the people that are going to be coming here if we get in trouble. So I want to get everybody in this, this little coastal bend area trained to a certain level, even if, you know, if it takes us to go out there and do the training for them. Hydrants, we've, we've started, you know, we did the initial test flow of all of the hydrants, we started capturing the ones, you know, we've heard me talk about these over and over. But something you're going to see new now is that we're getting, we're going now, we're at this point, we're in a maintenance mode. So ISO and NFPA, they, nobody really agrees on how often they'll be tested. One of them says every five years, another one's going to tell you every 10 years. But we're taking a, a pro stance and we're doing them every two. And with that, so we're test flowing them and making sure that we're keeping our number stat. Now that we've got multiple years of numbers, we're actually painting the hydrants to match NFPA. NFPA will tell you the, the bonnet on them, so you have the body of it's going to be red and then the bonnet may be blue. And it tells me the driver and the fire department at a glance what that, what that hydrant will flow. And, you know, I didn't want to do it the first year because there's all kinds of different color hydrants out there right now for, you know, various reasons, whether it was a different manufacturer we got them from or somebody's idea just for, for cosmetic looks. But there's actually an NFPA standard that says, you know, you, you would paint them a certain color. And again, so my crews, when they, when they're driving down the road, if I'm looking, I got hydrant either side between them and connect, well, I look at different tops and I know how much they'll float. This one's connected to a 10-inch main and this one's a 2-inch main, it'll show that by the top at a glance, not pulling up any software or anything. So you're going to start seeing some of those tops change. And we're going to encourage, we're going to have a PSA here real soon that's not for citizens to think, hey, let me, I want to, I like that blue top one, I want to have one just like it. That there's actually a strategy to what we're doing. We came through and I got some phone calls, it's probably been four or five months ago, but they were, you know, hey, I'm, I'm out here on, in this particular area and all my hydrants are white. Why'd you all paint them white? What do you mean they're white? You know, so we had to go out there and refix it and it was just somebody that thought they looked good to have white hydrants in their yards, so. But you're going to start seeing those changes and-
It's not a normal color.
We did have one injury here recently with that. We have a firefighter out on light duty and it's a result of, if you'll see at the very back of your packet, is that rush truck. We poured a ton of man-hours, blood, sweat and tears in that thing, we're really, really proud of it. It's actually been in service for a couple of months now. This is the first chance I've actually had to get you some pictures. Chief strongly encouraged me to show you some, and they don't do justice. I mean, the, I can't tell you how much steel. The first thing I thought was, when you're cutting down that flagpole, I want the steel. Those guys have a scrapyard over there and they go shopping at the, the transfer station, whatever, to look for steel when they're building stuff. That thing is just, it, it's amazing. And they, and they've built that from the, the floor up. There's not a section on it that's not been grinded, welded, torched, painted 30 times, you know? So we're really proud of that. And then behind that, you're just going to have the typical stuff. This is our chart showing the layout of the different kind of calls. I show this, you know, the rescue and emergency EMS and fire, you can kind of look in, look at the first couple of pages, show you what they are. Then I have the heat map, and this heat map is just for 2017. It, honestly, it doesn't change that much, while our, our calls kind of stay in the same area. And finally, you're going to see, it's just, I had one of the councilmen ask me, you know, kind of which one, which places are you inspecting? I didn't have an answer, so what I did is I just ran a real quick report. You see some of the businesses. We are not looking at, we don't go off and tell, we're just going to inspect bars, we're just going to, we really do a hodgepodge. We look at some larger businesses, maybe HEB, Walmart, but then we capture some of the small places. And we, you know, we don't go even alphabetical, we really kind of do a hodgepodge or we, they're complaint-based. We'll have somebody say, hey, I noticed a, a exit was blocked at that one. We go over there and, you know, we, you know, encourage them to correct those infractions. And then we ask to, you know, to do an inspection of the property and in most businesses, and I'm going to say all businesses have been very receptive to allowing us to do that inspection. And we work with them to, you know, to get them corrected. And that's all I have for you this time.
I have a question on the fire hydrants that are out of service. You have 18 that are out of service?
Yes, we do.
Okay, what's the steps or what, what do you have in place to correct?
So we do have a work order, we've created some accounts in the software that we have that I can link up representatives out of Public Works. They have the list, so not only do we have work, I have work orders that can exceed 40. And, and Fernando, or the Public Works has a crew on it and they just, they steadily pick it though. That could be something as simple as, hey, there's a cap missing, there's some rusted bolts. But if you'll remember from the budget workshop, he talked about, we have a lot of hydrants where it's not as simple as just replacing that hydrant. It is, there's going to be valves in the system that are, you know, may end up involving tearing up the street. It may be that they're locked, and maybe you can speak more on that, but it's not just a simple fix. We got some that, you know, and I love that we put our hands on them. So we've had some that we, and one of them, they were telling me a story of not too long ago, that, you know, you turn it and it comes out of the ground like four foot. It's just something that shoots up because there's, you know, there's a little elbow in there that, when they adjust the height for it, there's an elbow. And this one kind of comes up out of the ground, you know, and that's just, you know, they got to get a crew in there, so they kind of pick that. Is it in service, you know, some, yes and no? I put it, you know, would I use it for a fire? Would I put my man inside of a fire relying on that hydrant? So some of them, they may have, may or may not have water, you know, and that could connect to them, but you know, I'm going to say they're out of service, I wouldn't trust a crew in there. We have some that, you know, the valves at the bottom may leak a little bit, so we had to basically, what we'll do is we'll put the lids, the caps on really, really tight to keep it from leaking. If not, I'm going to have the nearest business or a passerby call and go, hey, why is this leaking? And so we lock those down. And the way it should be is I should be able to spin those off when we come up, you know. You see how fast we move, we come up, we drop the hose, they spin that cap, put it back on, where they'd need special tools to get- cap, put it back on, where they'd need special tools to get them off, when some of those we had blocked. They're in queue, you know, and Public Works is aware of those. I do believe I saw that you had, he had a number in excess of what I have out of service to get them replaced. They're not cheap. These are big, heavy, you know.
Okay. Now, my question on that is, do we have neighborhoods that do not have working fire hydrants?
The only issues that I've seen that I've, you know, I'd like to, you know, kind of put them in a hierarchy, and I assure you, the Public Works, you know, when they start getting these in, they kind of would work with us on which ones. We have some that are, you know, one of them's near a school. But ironically, with that new school coming in, it looks like it might end up needing to get moved. So it kind of worked out that way. But it was out of service, one near of service. But, you know, that particular one's got two other hydrants in the area.
I was just kind of wondering, you know, if, for instance, if you go like in a five or six mile radiuses, do they have, do we have at least some that are working?
Absolutely.
Okay. That's just my concern, that we have a mall neighborhood that doesn't have any fire hydrants, that that would be a trouble for, for instance, there was a fire there, and you had nothing to hook onto. That's my concern. But you said we don't have it.
So a couple of things happen. As we know where these pockets are, and what we do is we collaborate with PD. So worst-case scenario on some of these, we have lots of hydrants in the inner city of Aransas Pass here. And I may have to cross a highway, which I wouldn't normally want to lay the large diameter hose across the highway. So what we do is we collaborate. The guys know at a distance which ones, you know, where these areas are. So they're going to have, PD, hey, can you block off this? Because we're going to have to block off traffic to grab a hydrant that may be, not even that much further, it's just to cross the road. It's not convenient for us. But I'm getting water to that, that fire. And obviously, as you may know, the pumper carries a significant amount. And right away, with the command training, we know, we start putting other units in route. So I'm going to say, hey, I'm going to have Ingleside come with their tanker, you know, and start getting route here. So I have portable water in case something else happens.
Chief, I got a quick question. Can you map where all these down hydrants are?
Absolutely.
And then we could send them out to council, so they can have a visual perspective?
I'd be happy to do that. As a matter of fact, our year, as when we opened it up, I have encouraged all, not encouraged, but, you know, mandated that as soon as you open up your software that we have that we use for all our reporting, one of the first things you see is all the hydrants out of order. So that they see them, and it's just kind of just burned into their memory, so that they know those areas. And the good thing is, they're kind of sparse, and, you know, and they're kind of isolated, but there's other hydrants, you know, in the area.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. And I will get that, Chief.
So we'll get you a visual perspective.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Any other questions? Thank you.
You guys do a great job. Yes, you really do.
Thank you. It is a hard job.
Thank you.
The next is citizen comments. Citizen comments is intended for the matter that are not scheduled on the agenda. Please limit presentations to three minutes. A recording is made of the meetings, therefore, please speak into the microphone located at the podium and state your name and address.
I'll go first.
Thank you, council. Council. I'm so used to seeing commissioners. For the record, I am Jack Chaney. I'm your county commissioner for Aransas County. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak. Came here for a couple of reasons. First of all, I want to let you know that Chief Cox is going to come over tomorrow and present his budget to Commissioners' Court. He'll probably receive a very favorable opinion. I would like to invite each and every one of you to join him if you would like. It certainly would be good to have somebody from this austere group to, to come and support the chief. I would certainly invite you to do that. The second thing I'd like to do is, I want to congratulate the mayor and the two new council members and the returning council member. And I just, I want to encourage you to keep up the tremendous amount of progress that y'all have been made. I want to invite, I've invited the mayor personally to come and visit, having extended a, an invitation from Mayor Wax. Fortunately, not much of Rockport's in my city limits. I have almost, I have more people almost in Aransas Pass than I do in a large portion of my precinct. But I do thank the mayor for reaching out. Mayor Wax is anxious to meet with you. And I would invite y'all to come to any Commissioners' Court meeting that you would like. We have a lot of things that we can do together that we're not. Drainage, roads, we're doing some of your roads. Anything that we can do for you. Subdivision ordinances outside your city limits, but in your ETJ. The Commissioners' Court has worked very diligent, very hard. We have, I would invite, of course Fernando knows, our road and bridge engineer. As we move into storm season, I would make, I would like to invite y'all to come to our emergency management meetings as we come to San Patricio's emergency management meetings. You know, you never know till you know. But right now, I'm very confident that if we get a category three or less, that we got covered. If we get a category four or more, I don't think there's a snowball's chance in China that we're going to have it covered. But we will be a quick response, and we'll respond to our neighbors and, and help y'all as much as we can. Again, I enjoy the new, the old new council. And just if I can help you with anything, let me know.
What is Commissioners' Court?
Yeah. When and where?
It's the second and the fourth Mondays at nine o'clock at the county courthouse in, in Rockport, 301 North Live Oak. And if you ever want to come, and you ever want to speak to them, just give me a call, and I'll, I'll put you on the agenda as either citizens to be heard or talk about.
But you said tomorrow is, tomorrow, y'all are going to be there tomorrow?
No, it's on Mondays.
Oh, it's on Monday?
I'm in, we're, this whole week, we're in budget. We're, we're working from nine to four every, every day this week, doing the budget.
So you'll have Chief Cox there Monday?
No, Chief Cox will be there tomorrow. He's on our, he's in a budget.
You are coming tomorrow?
The budget workshop at 10:50.
It was in the budget workshop. Okay.
The budget workshop. I'm sorry. But I've had budget on my mind so much, I almost hate that term. But we're, we're excited to get Chief Cox up there. The Commissioners' Court has taken a different tact on the way. We used to give everything to Emergency Corps and everybody else, just got what was left. We've changed that. We're dealing with each fire department as an individual. And y'all certainly are a very important part of Aransas County's overall fire protection. Chief Cox has presented himself well, and has represented y'all well in everything that he's done with us in our mutual aid, everything. I congratulate him and his department. I saw that brush truck before, right after the limb hit it, and before they knew whether or not they were going to be able to fix it. And they've just done an amazing job. But again, thank y'all very much for allowing me. I'll come as often as I can, and I promise that I'll talk every time, so.
Thank you.
See y'all later.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Matt?
Good evening.
Hello, council. I'm Rosemary from the chamber. And I just wanted to come up here and give y'all some information about shrimpery. I don't have a lot of information. I know I only have three minutes, and I'm freezing, so I want to get out of here, too. But I think it's important for y'all to know some of the things about shrimpery and what goes into it. The first thing I want to do is share with you how appreciative we are of
the police department, of the city staff, the employees, and the council, always there for us when we need them, always, with a great attitude, as many people that we had on the grounds. I don't know what Eric had in, in trouble from all of the attendees, but I didn't see really anything that stuck out in my mind. Our numbers for this year are 59,000 for the entire weekend. And Billy, I know you felt that cooking all that shrimp. The event is monstrous already. It's costing us over $350,000 a year to have the shrimpery, and about $140,000 that is coming in as sponsorships from our business members. The rest of that is local real estate onsite, which is the vendors paying to be there. And then admission, drinks, and beer. That's pretty much where we get our funding from. But I think it's important to share with you the nonprofits that also benefit from this. I'm going to give you 15 names of some of the nonprofits that are out there raising money. The Aransas Pass Band Boosters, the Athletic Boosters, Little League of Aransas Pass, Crossroads Church, Reach, Christmas for Kids, Aransas Pass for Youth, Aransas Pass with Sonic Lodge, Aransas Pass Moose Lodge, Aransas Pass Police Explorers, Rotary Club of Aransas Pass, Knights of Columbus, Ingleside, Calvary Worship, NJRO TC, and Arc Services. Those are all of the nonprofits that were there raising money this weekend. I'm telling you what, that event, from every time I turned the corner, I was hitting a brick wall. But it paid off, and I'm sure we're going to make a good amount of money this year. And when I find those numbers out, and I can finally breathe, I promise you, I'll give you that information. Thank you.
Awesome. Great job.
Thank you, Rosemary.
I do know that the Rotary made, or they grossed $12,200.
Cynthia Vazquez, 1003 West Roads Avenue. I'm the board secretary for, I've got to figure out what group I'm here for. Aransas Pass Project Graduation. I just wanted to come up here and thank you all. Thanks to you all. Out of 84 graduates, and with y'all's donations and donations from the community, we were able to keep 67 young adults safe, fed, entertained, totally exhausted by the end of the night. We were pretty exhausted, too. But they left with so many prizes. Thanks to our awesome police officer that we had with us all night. We had one minor hiccup, and I attribute training to him just smoothly coming in, descalating the issue and, and taking care of it. I would have probably reacted a little different, but he kind of walked in, was like, did you need my help? So please thank him for us. He was great all night. I don't know how he did it to stay awake, but he was good to go. And, but it was just an amazing event. They enjoyed the pool, believe it or not. You know, they enjoyed, the staff at the pool was awesome. Sarah Lee in coordinating that with us. I mean, I, I'm in the human resource business, so I cannot tell you enough how important it is to have customer service, you know. And, and they treated us like VIPs, you know. We weren't paying a dime. So that was just amazing. All of the staff that we coordinated with to get these things done. Sully's Bowling Alley donates their facility as well, free of charge. They were so awesome and generous in that, as well as all our donors. So I just want to thank you all again. This is my third year volunteering. And this year was my kid's turn. He graduated, and, you know, he went home with a TV. He went home with gift cards. He went home with an office chair, and things that he's going to be able to use once he's done with boot camp in the Navy. But there were other students that, you know, there were other students that are set up now because of all those prizes. They've got, you know, comforter sets, they've got dishes, they've got, you know, coolers and fishing rods and, you know, outdoor gear. So thank you so much for supporting Aransas Pass Project Graduation. I will tell you all, we ran into Ingleside's project graduation people. And I was bragging about our city's support of our organization, and their jaw dropped, because they get no donations, no contribution, nothing from their city. So, yeah. Let's start a competition here. Thank you all again.
I think we already did a good job. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy.
Mayor, good to see you there. Counsel, I got a problem. My name is Larry Raines, and I live at 1453 South Avenue 8. And I'll just read it here. I'm an 18-year member of the Aransas Pass community. I reside at 1453 South Avenue 8. My concern's sent around a neighbor who is operating an auto repair facility out of his home. Okay? The amplified noise that I hear every day from air tools, metal cutting tools, cars coming and going, it goes so far as it spills into the street in front of, in front of my house. They pull cars up, unload them, you know, tow trucks, cars. This happened today. Tow truck, let's see, they park on the other side, which is the county, and I'm working closely with the county to solve this. But this couldn't happen on the other side of the street in front of my house, if it was allowed to happen in the first place, to operate a business out of a residential neighborhood. Okay? It got cars in the backyard, junk cars, strolling everywhere. And people go back there and pull stuff off of them. You know, I guess people do that. But I'm concerned, because I've seen them pouring oil out. You know, when you pull things off of cars, fluids come out, they fall on the ground. That concerns me. I'm, I'm next door to them. I have a well, you know. It's a blight on my property. It brings my value down. I've spent thousands on fences. Any one of y'all are more than welcome to come by any day of the week, anytime, and sit with me, and you'll see it for yourself. You'll see what I've spent to try, from plants to fencing, to police, to taking them to court, and trying to get them fixed. It don't work. I, I need y'all's help. I do. And, and if, I'd rather not say the name of the neighbor, you know. I could fill your spare time with photos and disc. I installed four cameras all the way around my house with microphones. If you want to hear it and see it, just let me know. I got plenty of evidence.
You live in the old Bates house?
Huh?
The old Bates house?
It's the, it's the new Raines house now. You know, and, you know, I could go on.
I've been, I've been here a lot longer than 18 years, so I go home.
Right. Yeah, you know, it's the old Bates house. But, you know, I'm retired. I can, I can live anywhere in the world I want to live. And I come here to live. You know, I come here to retire and live here, and...
You've done a great job on the house and the yard, by the way. It looks great.
Thank you. Then y'all know my problem. Y'all seen the problem. Okay?
Yes. Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
I got to get it fixed. It's got to stop. All right.
Yeah. If nobody says anything, then we think it's...
You're right. And I've also talked with some lady by the name of Kat.
Which one?
That's Kat.
Talked with her, and she's looking through the old forms or something about being, him being grandfathered in. But I don't want to take up no more than my three minutes, so.
All right. Thank you.
Counsel, if I may, just as an FYI, we do have a open case right now, an investigation going on with that homeowner. As soon as we get more information, we'll provide you other details.
And I didn't find out until today, so, but I wanted to bring, wanted to come here anyway. And I thank y'all for doing it.
Okay. Thank you.
My name is Donald Brummett. I live at 902 South Right. Last time I was up here, I made a mistake. I told you all that the sidewalks were put down in 1939, and weren't used since 1940. But they were put down in 1936, and I don't think they were used since 1937. And absolute waste. Finally got around after three weeks of picking up one-fourth of that brush that the city called to, to put down. And I know the city's not picking up brush anymore. That's what I've been told.
Absolute waste is still picking up brush and bulky. We're not accepting it at the...
Absolute waste is doing it. But the city used to do it, so we're not doing it anymore.
No, we're not allowed to put anything on the ground at the transfer station.
And I don't think the city should make it be people to cut their trees if they're not going to pick them up. And they have to wait on absolute waste. This brush is going to sit there for three more months before it's ever gone.
The rotation is once a week per month, and...
Yeah, I know.
They should be caught up by this month completely, so the rotation will stay...
They won't be. They just picked part of it up today, and they're gone somewhere else.
How much are they putting out?
I'm picking up about, about my car's worth.
Yeah, because that's the approved amount.
Yeah. It's not a Volkswagen, but it's close to it.
It's a Jetta.
But anyhow. Anyhow, the other thing I have is, Mr. West has put signs down on the harbor. And the no dogs without leashes, and everybody should park where they're supposed to park. Now, I quit letting my dog run. I don't feed the birds anymore. But the fishermen are still blocking part of that parking lot, to where the cars used to go down and pull into the parking lot. There's certain days of the week, you can't get down there because the sports fishermen are blocking that whole area down there. I went down there one day thinking I could get through, but I had to back all the way out, almost to the launch site, before I could get out around there. And I know this would cause a lot of trouble, but if I took 10 or 15 people, went down there and blocked those boat ramps with cars and get out and go sit underneath the table, how long would it be before the police get down there and make us move? Chuck, you need to enforce that signs you put down there. Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, counsel, just to comment on some of the parking issues, there, there is an issue as far as marking and stuff like that, but that ground is not very conducive to the paint that they've been using to put down. We have worked with Public Works in trying to put some better striping down. But Donald, if you'll call us when you encounter an obstruction, we'll have an officer go. But if the officers see something there, they are going to address it regularly. In fact, we've been pretty lucky recently, getting some good arrests from people out there doing what they shouldn't be doing. So they, they do keep a close eye on it, to help Chuck out.
Anybody else? So how you doing? Who's going to make the motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'm making a motion. We adjourn this meeting.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. It's been two weeks today.